Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting the order to order and if you would please stand up and pledge. Charlene, will you give the roll please?
Harwood.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Bonn-Abell.
Here.
Weichert.
Dain.
Here. Michelle's not here, is she?
Not yet. Go ahead and do okay.
Mrs. Dixon, the student achievement.
Wait, can I come over here? I thought someone had already met Whitney. She made her way around the table. This is Ms. Whitney Steer. Whitney is a senior who has customized her education at Crestview in order to enhance her interests and foster her career goals after high school. She has a clear picture of how she would like her future to develop and has worked very hard to ensure her success. After high school, Whitney plans to attend the Ohio State Agricultural Technical Institute in Worcester to study livestock science, the beef specification, and emphasis on animal nutrition. During her junior year, she intends to transfer to main campus to major in agricultural engineering. Currently, she attends the Columbia County Career and Technical Center in the veterinary tech program while taking her academic classes at Crestview, which includes a calculus class to better prepare her for college. Whitney is one of our students. Our students at our half-day career center can take three classes at Crestview and that fourth class period is transportation to get between the two. But Whitney wanted calculus, which was offered fourth period. So we made arrangements with Mr. Bevelheimer, her Vet Tech instructor. So Whitney goes a little bit later. She stays at Crestview one extra period to get calculus. Do you get lunch?
Oh yeah, I get lunch and then I take it to classroom.
She gave up lunch for calculus. Imagine that. How Mrs. Jordan?
Top of her class as well. Excellent student.
Whitney demonstrates her leadership skills by accepting the office of President of FFA, National FFA State Degree, 4-H Club President, Junior Fair Board Treasurer, and Chair of the Ribbons Committee. She is currently raising a feeder calf and she has counted show at the fair and has exhibited steer hogs and beef feeders in previous years. Being an active member of 4-H, Whitney participates in numerous community service projects while finding time for apartheid job on a dairy farm. So you can see where our students sometimes have a difficult time making it to our board meetings because, you know, they just don't fit into a busy schedule. But I'm so glad that you could come this month because I'm one of every one of these students.
I think I was forty-four, I can say maybe quit last month.
You know what it was? It was National Honor Society at the career center. That was their induction stuff. Busy folks. Well, congratulations, Whitney. And who do you have with you?
My dad, Scott Stew.
That's always good things for your dad to hear.
Well, my mom will be here, but she's not. She's out of the...
Another name. Your dad can read that to her when he comes. Thank you.
Wait ten minutes. Mrs. Dixon, please. Whitney, is there anything you would like to say to everyone here?
The guys should bring ag to the school. If needed, I believe. I've talked to Mrs. Moore about it and she believes so also.
Well, we have talked about it and there's a couple hurdles there.
Yeah.
But appreciate that. I've had the opportunity since March to work down at the career center and work in a classroom next to where Whitney is located at and her Vet Tech program. And it's been a pleasure. She is, you know, just a role model to all the other ones there with your ambitions. And with your degree at Ohio State, when you finish after four years, where are you looking to be at? Where are you going to do?
I, because I'm going for engineering and nutrition. I want to work for like a big, like a big company. Like I looked at Collin Bosses and car build and different companies like that. And then different like engineering companies, like very progressive, John Deere.
You have high expectations and I hope you meet all those.
I hope so too.
I know you will.
I plan on it.
Look for great things to happen.
Thank you.
And thank you. You folks can stay as long as you wish. The building improvement team?
We're going to give our building improvement presentation and I would like to introduce teachers who may or may not have met them before. This is Mrs. Felicia Joy and she is our math instructor, teaching calculus, math exploration, algebra. Mr. Randy Yazdak is our STEM instructor with middle school and high school. And Mr. Michael Cunningham, who teaches American history and geography. So they will be giving you some of our presentations. Just as a beginning, we're all sitting in this and I know you all have copies of our building improvement plan. So we're not going to read through our goals and our strategies. We're in three main areas: academics, school culture, and technology. And this is finishing up the last year of our three-year cycle with our building improvement plan. So at this point in time, we have spent close to three years on these action steps that have been developed. And so this next school year, we will be rewriting a whole new cycle of building improvement plan. We'll be looking at some new directions we want to go. We'll be looking at things that were successful, things that we decided, you know, maybe we don't want to go down that path anymore. So it's going to be a complete and total reveal. So what you're seeing this time is the very end of a building improvement cycle. And so we're just going to go right ahead and get started. Okay, the first area we're going to talk about is school climate. Okay, the main things I'm going to talk about with school climate, one of the bigger things is that we implemented the Michael Ross Program starting last year. And this year, talking about prevention of bullying and like student leadership and student involvement. We created these small groups and they were randomly chosen. They were only put together by grade level. So you had freshmen with these seniors. Those groups met only a couple times this year and not as much as we had hoped, but it was a start. So that's, we feel, an opportunity that we're hoping to build on next year. Another thing is exhibiting our Crestview colors and logos. One just small thing I like to see is the lockers in the high school hallway. You just see, I mean, at the end of the year, they get a little bit tattered and worn, but you can see all of the groups the kids are in. You see the senior lockers, which the parents do an awesome job with. And that really just, you know, kind of promotes that school spirit. Secondly, one thing that myself I've seen improve, I have not helped as much with, but is the bulletin boards. The bulletin boards have been more colorful, more information on those. Even just, I saw Mrs. Natty taking stuff down and put up stuff for many relay for life. So they're not just staying the same all year. It seems like they're changing up. Also, one thing is Whitney was here for is our Student of the Month. Mrs. Dixon is always asking for suggestions, the Student of the Month, one boy, one girl, and we have those each month updated. And I think it just kind of, I have students from my fourth period chom... Mrs. Joy, have you been recommending me for Student of the Month? You know, students look forward to that, so. So what we hope to do is continue to update those colors in school, revamp the character of bullying training. Like I said, hopefully that's, it's been an encouragement, so we really took a big step and we want to improve that program as well. One other big thing we hope to look at opportunity for is attendance to improve our attendance issues at high school. And also maybe look into an ISS program. I've heard there's going to be hurdles with that as well, the ISS program. But hopefully kind of developing something that promotes, you know, better discipline in our classrooms. I will say as a detention monitor, we went from half hour in-school attentions after school to two hour and four hour. And I will say, just knowing from last year, those numbers have decreased and I think the students are taking it very seriously. They don't like to just have to sit there and not speak for two hours. I'm normally doing the four hours and I had a, he had a student, he said, "Mrs. Joy, can I just stand up and walk around the room?" He said, "I am miserable." I said, "You can walk around, isn't it, but you're not leaving." So we're going to do the work as long as we can, but they're not enjoying it. So hopefully that's an improvement towards our discipline as well. All right, technology. So our goal for the past three years has been to become more of a paperless school. So we're going to be fifteen percent is paperless, or with paper, depending back to some technology. And we've done a lot of work recently. We have a lot of professional development with this staff. At every one of our staff meetings, we show, we have one staff member show something that they learned to do with technology. And that's really helped all of us because we were able to see how other teachers implement it. And we've done school day professional development on the technology and how to use the netbooks to their full potential. We're looking to obtain grants. I personally have a grant. Sam, we have a grant for our 3D software. English has grants, technology has grants. And we did a program called Quality Matters this year. I think all of us were a part of Quality Matters.
Yeah, very good.
It is to show us how to improve online instruction. So how to make your online across Moodle page easier for kids. And we're looking to add more instructional support. Kathy Bennett has been a great resource for us this year. She's helped a lot of teachers out. And Daryl, of course, has always been able to help us as well.
Hey, Daryl.
We have implemented one-to-one initiatives. Every student has a netbook. And we went through a lot of issues with those last year. I think this year they're going so much better. I see all students using them in classes. We are trying to be as paperless as possible. We understand we probably will never get to be 100% paperless. There's just some things like, oh, do you want paper math? For example, is one of them. But we are trying to be as paperless as possible and not wasteful. And we're trying to develop more projects based on technology. So Mrs. Joy has a math exploration course that's based on technology. My STEM courses are based on technology. You guys have seen the 3D models that we've made, so that's all technology based as well. Going forward, we always could do more. There can always be more professional development. We can always push people to do more with technology. And we're going to continue to use Moodle more to its full potential to work on paperless functions.
Okay. I get to move around finally. It's killing me standing in my spot. I'm going to focus on academics. And just what we, you know, some of our goals this year was focusing on how can we get the graduation rate to increase by 1%? And what are some other things we could do just to get kids more dialed in with what's going on in the classroom? So here's some of the things that we've kind of come up with. Currently, our English department is coming up with a way. We know that writing is one of our weakest areas in the school. So what was, our English department is looking at a way that how across the board, across the curriculum, can we all together come together and write and have a consistent writing agreement for the students? So that way, we're all grading the same way, we're all looking at it the same way. And with the fact that the OGT is probably not going away for the next few years, you have extended response questions on the OGT that these softwares have to answer. Sometimes they're two-point questions, sometimes they're four-point questions. And our kids have a hard time doing that. So with the English department, all the departments are going to come together. We're going to figure out how can we boost this up and turn this into a bigger positive? And increase the writing across, throughout, across the board for math and technology and social studies. Another thing we've done is with the English, we've added eBooks this year. Social Studies also has an eBook. We were able to get that on there. Been a blessing for me because I don't have to drag out the textbooks. I can just put up, I just throw up the chapters or the sections I want the kids to look at on Moodle. If we need to do anything with reading, I don't have to drag any paper or like print anything. It's fantastic. So science is going to be getting new eBooks here pretty soon, so hopefully they'll be able to be doing the same thing. Oh, let's see what else we got here. Activity period. Activity period Wednesday morning has been a great time for students to kind of catch up on work if they fell behind. Say they missed something, they missed a test, a quiz. A perfect opportunity for them to come into a classroom, make that up. Other times if students are struggling, teachers can call students in and be like, "Come here, camp out at my desk for a few minutes. Let's kind of rehash some things, go over some things." So it's been, it's been great to be able to have that time with students to give that little extra nudge or to make up anything they need to do. Students here are so involved in things. And sometimes it's really tough to get a student to come in before school or after school. And so activity period really helps out with that and being able to have students come in and make up some. I was not involved in this, but lots of the teachers here worked on FIP this year, which is Formative Instructional Practice. It's different ways. How can we get things together, say like content standards, learning targets? So that way, for example, you know, I use learning targets already. And it's basically when the kids come into my classroom that day, they've got a learning target that they need to hit by the end of class. And we do a little assessment to see, do those students, have they, did they meet that assessment? You know, did they hit that target or not? And what do we need to do to make sure that the students who did got it, keep it? And the students who didn't get it, how can we get them to make sure that they got it? So different ways that you can get that in. We've been doing, working on getting the students more involved in analyzing their own learning, not just us shoving it and spoon feeding them, but how are they figuring out that they got it or not? So there's been a lot of good stuff, positive things that the teachers have been working through that. So you can see we have a host of different ways that we've been working on that. Big things that we've been doing with content standards and getting the new state standards all aligned in classrooms, making sure everybody's got content standards that they're working towards. One big area opportunity for the school is working on college readiness. We talked about how one thing we implemented this year was having a pre-assessment at the beginning of the year and a post-assessment at the end of the year to measure student growth. Okay, from the beginning of the year till now. How have these students learned? What have they learned? How have they grown? And, you know, for kids going off to school, I mean, we've all been in college classes. We know, you show up to school, you're asked to read 10 chapters in one week, you've got a test on it, it's all on your own. Oh, by the way, your grade is based on a midterm and a final. And so that's, it hits kids hard when they leave here. And so that's an opportunity for us to move forward as we keep working on that. And in fact, that is one of our opportunities, is to continue to develop this whole idea of looking at a post-test and a pre-test and, you know, maybe even throw in a midterm and different aspects for assessing student growth. Couple things we worked on, we tried to study skills class the last couple of years for ninth graders. Part of the reason to do this was to get kids in a music appreciation. Let's see if we can pull kids into choir, into band. Didn't quite work, so we're putting a pause on that and kind of thinking, okay, what can we do to make this better going forward? Help the freshmen make that transition from middle school to high school. That's such a huge change for them. And so what can we do to make that transition a lot smoother? So we're going to keep looking at that and see what we can come up with. I might be done.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from you guys about anything we have seen here?
How much time do you put in as a team?
With staff or building improvement?
Your building improvement.
Our goal is we normally meet monthly. Already we've met three times in the last week and a half.
Yeah.
So I just gave a project. If we've got a project, then it's more often that...
We've done quite small group things too. Hopefully, it's going to be one song on part and they work on a different part and we've had smaller as well.
This isn't all of our building improvement team.
Yeah.
In the mornings and the activities, time in the morning, is there a chance, I know they can catch up with their work and whatnot. Is there also an opportunity for them to give us an expert on whatever it might be, their math or their English or whatever they...
Yeah, it's also a time for students, so if a student is having, is struggling in my course, I'm available. You know, if that's not, if a student's taking a test, then I can be at my desk. And if a student comes in, that's what I'm there for during that time is to help them to improve whatever they're lacking.
I have a question, probably more of a comment. Some, two things you said there, the college readiness and writing. One of the things I guess I would like to see for, being somebody who evaluates a lot of these high school scholarships, we don't do very good on our scholarships.
Yes.
I remember.
Our writing is not good.
And that's why you want to...
It would almost be like nice to have a one-day seminar. And, you know, and I know that you can't take that whole day, but, you know, for these seniors, sometime in that first couple of weeks, pay them dividends because, you know, folks are asking for money and, I mean, that's not seniors. Crestview, it's, you know, all of us...
Yeah, oh, definitely, it's across the board, yeah.
I just want to say, just don't do good at it.
So we figured if we intensify things a little bit, we're going to have writing in many different venues. They're going to see what it's like to write about art, which is going to be a different type of writing than maybe they're going to write about in science class, which is more factual. And in math class, in the math exploration class that Mrs. Joy teaches, that's research-based. So, you know, you're doing a lot of research, writing, typewriting there. So, you know, it's never going to hurt them. The more they write, it's only going to be positive. And our OGT scores, we are, we're always up there, one of the top in the county. But we never get that highest level. We never get that highest level of students. Our students are, you know, here and mediocrity isn't good enough. So we've got to step it up a little bit and write. Eventually, it will reflect. And why we're saying that, where, no matter where it is in the curriculum, the same styles. You know, a paragraph has to have a certain structure so that everybody has the same expectations. You know, secondary sources have to be a certain way. And if everybody across the curriculum has that same expectation, then it's going to be less confusing for the students and hopefully, you know, bump up the rigor.
Yeah, because you imagine a student coming in and saying, you know, okay, in math, you're going to be writing. And so you've got one set of standards. You come into my class and social studies, there's a whole nother set of standards for writing. It's going to be so hard for the kids to sit there and come in and be like, okay, what does this teacher want? And what is this teacher looking for? And so I think that's why I love what the English department is doing, is to be able to say, okay, across the board, let's look at these things. So the kids know every single teacher is looking at this. And I think that's going to be a huge payoff.
They're not going to like it.
They're not going to like it, but...
I think too much of their writing is based on text messaging and quick response. You know, I think they've, they've grown up with the technology, so if you can't type it on, with your thumbs, you probably don't know how to do it.
But I think it just goes.
When you talk about assessments, the pre and the post-test, the SLOs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what's involved in it.
Okay. So you're pulling out the main points and then...
Right.
Bloom's Taxonomy and...
Hit away, you know, or to use, you know, as an example of our social studies. Like their pre-test, it's over, their pre-assessment they get at the beginning of the year is over everything we talk about for the entire year. So they get measured on to see, okay, you know, what level am I working with with students? I'm, you know, probably going to have, if a typical, if a typical pattern comes out, I should have 90%, very low, with just a 10%, probably a little high. Because you know, some kids who are very interested in history, probably know a lot walking in. That's just typical. By the post-assessment, I actually, this year, was able to change my SLO target numbers a little bit because the students scored a little higher than I expected. And so, which I'm looking forward to because I feel like now, like next year, I can use those numbers to tighten up a lot of things. But that, it was, it was interesting to see the students approach that last, that post-assessment. Because I just sit there reminding them, well, you guys already did this at the beginning of the year. Now you're just seeing how much you've grown, how much you know. I mean, it's, it's a tough sell, but once the kids start thinking like, and you show, you know, a lot of them, when I showed them the scores, I said, "You were here and now you're here." A lot were like, "Wow, you mean I actually like retained all that?" You know, it was a shock to them, but it was a good shock. A lot of them had very positive reception to it to realize like, okay, wow, I, I grew. And I think once we keep getting that in the kids' heads, I think that'll just become more and more positive to them to say like, okay, wow, I am learning stuff. And so I think it's just, once we get that culture built in, we will see it. So it's a matter of fine tuning it and just getting what we can.
Very good. Any other questions? We certainly appreciate you taking the time to come in and make the presentation and appreciate what you do.
Thank you. We appreciate Randy putting all the hard work into putting this together. She did a fantastic job.
Okay, before you, you have a consent agenda. You have a copy of the items considered for tonight's consent agenda. Would any board member wish to remove any item to be considered separately?
Just this, the number four, please.
Any others?
President, I would like to exempt item number 13.
Any others? And I would also wish to remove number five. Any others? If not, is there a motion to accept? Dave, second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, roll please.
Miller?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Weichert?
Yes.
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes. Okay, let's go back and we will open up number four. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Braden, second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene?
Miller?
Abstain.
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Weichert?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes. Number five. Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, the roll please.
Tucker?
Yes.
Weichert?
Yes.
Which one are we talking about?
13, five.
Oh, I'm sorry, I referenced 13.
I started to pucker up for him. Because I have no screen here, so I'll have to cut it off and I'll see if I can...
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Garwood?
Abstain. Number 13, is there a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Braden, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene?
Miller?
Yes.
Weichert?
Abstain.
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Garwood?
Abstain.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay. Treasurers' request and recommendations not included in the consent agenda?
Item number one, I'd like to request the board approve the financial reports and investments that's prepared in pre-summer.
Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? The, this is for the five-year?
No.
Not yet, okay, okay.
That was under consent.
That was under consent, we got it. Okay. Hearing, hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene?
Tucker?
Yes.
Weichert?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Item number two, I'd like to request the board accept the donations as listed there on the agenda. There are several.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Dave, any discussion?
As you can see, the football program is trying to raise donations for banners. That's why there are several listed there.
What would type of banners?
To go around the football field.
We're going to hang them on the fence like soccer does.
Oh, okay.
Baseball.
Is that too late to...
Nope, they're going to leave it open all through the summer, I believe. So we just have to contact Mr. Kew.
Very good. Any other discussion? We shall proceed to vote. Charlene?
Miller?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Bonn-Abell?
Yes.
Weichert?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Herman Miller had to go to a meeting in Columbus today. He anticipates he'll be back before the end of the board meeting. So we'll hold off on race to the top and see if he comes in. If not, I'll try to provide that, that report later. Okay, with that said, board reports, career center, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. We had Mrs. Kelly Darney, which I can guess is a Crestview graduate. And she, she is in charge of the adult education, she's the adult...
We had Mrs. Kelly Darney, which I can guess is a Crestview graduate, and she, she is in charge of the adult education, she's the adult educational director there, and she presented information to the Board of Education regarding the adult education curricula. And Mrs. Darney shared continuous improvement plan for the adult education, which is planned, includes goal one, to excel in the student performance, goal two, to build a strong and positive relationship among students, community members, employees, stakeholders, and such. Goal three, to excel in staff performance, and goal four, develop and maintain district culture that supports, that supports the adult education core values. Mrs. Darney also shared following seven main areas of study for the adult programming, which is practical nursing, welding, pharmacy technician, EMT, patient care technician, medical office technology, and nursing aid.
Short meeting. It's a good one, man. Any questions? Dr. Miller?
Okay, this, excuse me. This month, Student Achievement Research Brief was on, excuse me, allergy. No, just kidding. Flipping of classrooms. Basically, what a flipped classroom is, is where students watch the lecture at home and then do work or other enrichment activities in the classroom. When we were in Columbus this past year for the board meeting, I actually went to one of the seminars I went was on a flipped classroom. It was actually pretty interesting. But basically, you know, they talk about some of the challenges of flipping the classroom, you know, whether kids have internet access at home, whether they have the technology at home, and the various ways to combat that, you know, including, you know, possibly letting kids go into the computer labs before or after school, letting them watch them on their mobile devices, their home computers, or, you know, potentially having several DVDs burnt of, of the lectures that they could watch. You know, they talked about the impact of a flipped classroom. Well, there, there hasn't been a well-randomized scientific study that has been shown in a non-scientific, of a survey of 453 teachers who flipped their classrooms. About two-thirds said that their test scores increased. You know, they said there's particular benefits for students in AP courses and students with special needs. 80% said that student attitudes were better, and 99% said that they would flip them again next year. There was a specific incident cited, a Clintondale High School in Michigan saw that the failure rate of their ninth-grade math students dropped from 44 to 13% by after adopting flipped classrooms. You know, just on a side note, some of the things that they talked about down in Columbus is if you eventually had a lot of the lectures catalog, you know, you could potentially almost let certain classes be potentially student-driven at the pace that they worked at, kind of thing. You know, you could go on and, you know, some, therefore, you know, when you're looking at increasing scores and challenging certain students, it was a little easier to that, to do that. You know, the teacher liked it because, you know, especially if they're proceeding at different levels, you know, you're not lecturing and worrying about, okay, am I getting it? You know, is Ed Miller falling behind? And am I more impressed? And where everybody saw it, you could watch it multiple times. But then, you know, we, when we came to work, you know, I may be having a problem with this aspect, and he may be having a problem with different, but then you had 40 minutes to work those out rather than, you know, just covering the lecture and having to work on those at home. Certainly some, some challenges to it as well, you know, the availability of the technology and stuff like that.
How close is anybody around here to it?
Um, this, now, I talked to, I don't want to put my, I talked to Darryl, and he was saying, he was presenting some things down there about that, right? About, we were talking about that flipped classroom when I talked to you after that when we were in Columbus. I mean, you know, potentially, I don't know that anybody here's doing it. We.
We've got some that are doing partial. I wouldn't say they're doing a full, a full flip at this point, but we've got some that are starting that process.
Very good. Anyone else?
That's it.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Wiker?
A lot going on at the legislative level, however, I'll kind of key on a couple interesting things. Congress is attempting to expand charter schools. The National School Boards Association, the leading advocate for public education, representing more than 90,000 local school members, board members, as opposed to HR 10, the success and opportunity through Quality Charter Schools Act, which is scheduled for a floor vote this week. Basically, they are, this, the theme of which is the decisions regarding charter schools should rest with the state and local school boards, not federal lawmakers, the NSBA contends. Charter schools, absent school board oversight have far less accountability, and there's, this theme will transfer over into another bill that's, that's coming up here, I'll talk about in a minute. Charter schools absent local school board oversight have far less accountability for student achievement than traditional public schools. Further states that the false idea that charter schools are the panacea for, for education reform, which in fact, research indicates that the vast majority of charter schools do not outperform traditional public schools. In fact, in this other article, they were, they cited some research that, that said that the, the schools that a lot of these students are coming from, local school districts that a lot of these, these students are coming from, as they go to the charter schools, the school to which they came from have performed much better than what the schools that they went to the charter school at. Well, the number of charter schools across the nation has risen. Data indicates that just one in five charter schools outperform public schools in reading and math assessments. So that's, I don't know if they voted on that yet, however, that is up for a floor vote this.
What's the consensus on that?
I'm not 100% sure. My guess is that it's in Congress. If Congress passes legislation to help states and local communities improve the quality of their public schools, absent federal intrusion, we applaud it. I think that's the theme that, you know, that we should have more local input, and the federal government should not be actually involved in as, as much.
Because with everything else, I think you'll see it pass the Senate or pass the House and be held up in the Senate.
In that same vein, charter school transparency, now, we went through a, a little exercise about a month or two ago with public records. And I know several different newspapers came and asked a series of questions about what, what information they could glean from different schools around the area, and it was actually an enlightening, enlightening exercise. Charter school transparency accountability legislation introduced, Mayor, or Joe Chivoni, not Mayor Chivoni, Joe Chivoni introduced Senate Bill 329, which require Ohio community charter schools to be more accountable and transparent. The proposed legislation calls for requiring non-public operators and non-public sponsors of charter schools to comply with public records, public record laws that deal with management and sponsorship of the schools, requiring charter schools to establish a public records commission and public records retention schedule as traditional public schools are required to, and requiring the state auditor to annually audit each charter school operator and charter school sponsor, covering only public funds for non-public operators or sponsors. So I think the theme of this is that they are, need to be a lot more accountable in what they've held, been held to at this point. Representative John Patrick Carney, Democrat from, Democrat from Columbus, also plans to induce a companion bill in the House, which will cover just about the same type of, of things. So that's, those two themes are public school, public school accountability, charter school funding, so on and so forth. The third bill I'd like to talk about is the OEA, Ohio Education Association, calls for suspension of state achievement tests. I know there's been a lot of talk about state achievement tests and, and that sort of thing. Nearly 1,000 education leaders from the schools throughout the state gathered Friday and Saturday at Ohio Education Spring Representative Assembly in Columbus. And basically, what they want to do is propose legislation that would hit the pause button on all state-imposed high stakes decision based on student test results and the implementation of Ohio's new learning standards. So I think they are talking about delay, and I know several of us attended one of the sessions with Peggy Lainer. She is proposing a delay, however, it's not the three-year delay that has been suggested by the OEA. I think it's more of a two-year, I think she's looking more for a two-year delay in implementation of these different things, of these different testings.
And that's on the PARC. You know, that's not the current achievement test, but you mean that's the PARC.
Basically, it'll give a chance to kind of catch up on, on the curriculum and align the curriculum with the PARC testing. So anyways, what's kind of the theme of that? So, yeah, a lot of things going on. We may yet see some, some delays in the, in the high stakes testing.
I appreciate that. What about the teacher evaluation? Is there a bill pending on that, on the percentage?
There is, but it hasn't gone anywhere, and we're operating under the current 50%.
At some point, it was supposed to go to 30.
It was supposed to have dropped down at one time to 35, and then at one time, cleared down to 30, and it hasn't, hasn't passed.
That would, that would make a difference.
Margin bargaining.
Pardon?
Isn't margin bargaining at 50% though, right?
Yeah.
So even if it changed.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Straney?
Seniors last week. That's, that's what's going on right now. I mean, we have, we had our day of hope, which went really well. Great turnout. Most students I've seen there in a long time. Our mini relay for life is tomorrow, I think. We'll probably move it inside for the morning at least. And then the seniors' last day is Friday, so.
You're not counting, are you?
Absolutely. We've been counting since day one. And I'm just going to tell the board.
Some of the projects you've worked on? How's, how's everything going?
I, I submitted my paperwork, I don't know. It's been kind of hard to paint anything good out of your life as well, so I haven't been able to do that.
Ordered those, I don't know if they ever.
They just haven't shipped yet.
His water thing, they never shipped yet today.
I haven't heard of this.
Yeah. But they were ordered, so hopefully they'll come in over the summer and be ready to go, fortunately. We won't be able to.
I'll be here, so.
Okay.
I'll be here. Water bottle back.
Are you coming back?
Some working here this summer.
No, 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 I mean school.
Yeah. I hope not. Check that out.
You'll be here, you'll be here next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Good? All right, thank you. Board committee reports, buildings and grounds, Mr. Bonnicle.
Do you want to skip to Race to the Top since Herman's here?
I'm sorry, Herman, you were so quiet coming in, I didn't hear you. You would like to take the stage, please?
Well, it's occasionally been set up selfie for a big guy, but I don't know about quietly entering. Actually, I just came back from Columbus, just got back a little bit ago. We were, today, our, was our presentation to the FAMs Committee and the other schools participating in the cohorts two and three. So the math section, the language arts was down yesterday, and did their presentation. We did ours today, and so maybe, I know our math coach at an appropriate time might want to share that with you. It pushes about 25 minutes, so it might be one that we want to do on separate nights rather than double up. So I know she's probably going to have to talk to you about the possibility, Suzy Turner, about maybe doing that, so you can see some of the things that your middle school instructors have done through formative assessment in middle school. That is, the second year of that and coming to a close, and I guess while they'll still be working at some of the filing of that information and putting it on website and making resources available to other teachers around the state, including the videos that we put together, PowerPoints we put together as resources for teachers, it's an appropriate time to talk about the close of Race to the Top.
Well, first of all, how was it received?
It was fun. We, we had a group of about 20, 25 teachers from other school districts were there. It went, it went well. We had, we had dubbed ourselves the Fantastic Four, and it went, had a little logo going and stuff, so it went over pretty well. Our kids did a good job of participating, and that certainly makes the, the thing go. Talk about all the things you want, but you have to have willing bodies to carry it out. But as, so as we talk about the, the close of Race to the Top, I know Mr. Dilling has shared with you that the, we started this in 2010 with me coming to meetings and sharing with you initiatives and programs that we've been trying to put in place to reformulate how we think about educating our students, how we're evaluating their progress as we work towards some of the evaluation, but doing those in checkup evaluations in between. So at this time, I guess, so that's starting in 2010, we're at the end of the fourth year. And as Mr. Dilling mentioned, they've opened up the option for support through another year with no additional funding, but saying that as far as resource goes, as far as support staff goes, that they would still continue to do that, and we've, we've signed on to do that, with really basically saying, let's keep growing what we've started and essentially with, you know, the support of the Race to the Top personnel, Kathy Nolan and Ivan Wilson, who I think you're meeting with tomorrow, maybe?
Right.
Yeah. So I guess I would just say to you, you know, I felt like we've always had a good communication between our board, our administration, and our teaching staff, and this is an extension of that. It's one of the things that Ivan Wilson and others who were regional people involved with Race to the Top said they really admired. I know, Mr. Wiker, you were at the one meeting that he was present at, and the fact that there was a board member present at that meeting was new to him. And I think that we have some unique communication, things that happen in that regard here at Crestview. So I guess I would offer to you that while Race to the Top comes to the close, and I'm not looking for another place to be every evening, if you would want me to continue to come and basically give you a five-minute, you know, rundown of where we're at on the progress we're making on these initiatives and programs, I would be willing to continue to do that. And so you can let me know through Mr. Dilling. If you would like to continue to have these five minutes just to kind of check up and be able to ask questions, I'm willing to do that from our standpoint as the teaching staff here at Crestview. I think you, you know, again, just it's an opportunity to hear some of the things, and like I said, seeing the, the video presentations really give you an idea of some of the things that people are doing in classrooms to try and reach kids and make sure that they're getting the instructions taking place. Just to summarize on Race to the Top stuff a little bit, you know, I think the key thing is, you heard Mr. Dilling talking about, and you, I heard you over talking, speaking about legislative, you know, initiatives and pushes and proposals about delaying, you know, PARC and as they work on some of the logistics of the tests and all those kind of things. But the, the one part that's there is the, you know, what really now has been titled Ohio's New Learning Standards. That's the official title for what people were, you know, calling the common core. Essentially, we've had these academic content standards, we've had standards since probably as long as you can probably remember. Mr. Dilling, you've been in education a little longer than me, but I'd assume that there's always been some standardization, and that's where this is really at. You know, it, as I mentioned before, it's a delicate balance. You want to have both autonomy as a classroom teacher, autonomy as a local school district to make decisions that are beneficial to your students. At the same time, I use this word with my senior Sunday School class so much, it's so important to have a tether to keep you in check. You know, and I think that word's really valuable as we think about how we make decisions on educating people, that, you know, what sounds good in a small group of people can start to sound good to those people, and people start nodding head and going, oh, that sounds right. But the tether from outside is when you have accountability to something bigger than yourself, it can be restricting at times, it can make decisions sometimes you don't agree with. And, you know, it's not giving up control. Teachers here are still making good decisions about what kids are learning and not learning, and where they need interventions, and where they need enrichments. These are happening every day. So I guess in thinking about that, I wanted you to be assured that as we look at Ohio's new learning standards, which is really a skinning down of standards by grade level so that we get rid of overlaps, eliminate gaps, and educate kids to be able to perform not just at a state test here in eighth grade. I mean, my kids took it last week. They took their math section last Wednesday, a week ago today. And, you know, at no point this year did I say, okay, on that date, May 7th, Wednesday, the math test will happen, we'll be done. At that point, it was more about telling them, and now is when we continue your path to readiness for high school, you know what I mean, and for the next level. And being, give yourself options in your studies so that you can choose trade schools, so you can choose professions, so you can choose military options, college options, whatever your decision's gonna be. But don't paint yourself in the corner as a 13 or 14-year-old with, you know, limiting the what you've learned and what skills you can take to high school. So we'll go back to work as they were at work the rest of the day, we'll go back to work again tomorrow, and we'll continue to do that for whatever days we're sitting in class between now and the 29th. And I think that's, those decision-making things are what a lot of teachers are looking at, you know, doing the right things for kids and trying to make solid decisions. So the STEM program, the, you know, high school to higher ed, a lot of the things I've mentioned to you, those are gonna continue to go on, and we've just basically agreed that we're gonna continue to support them. Really, at this point, I don't know that there's really any big financial commitment to do that as much as just energy and effort. And those are things that we can always continue to give and work hard at. So, Mr. Dilling, I guess I've forgotten something.
No, I think what Herman's saying is true. I think that the whole idea of Race to the Top is it's given us a head start on preparing for all of these initiatives that are coming, and our staff has embraced it and moved forward with it. In all cases, from FAMs to high school to higher ed, they're wanting to continue the work that they've started so that we can be prepared for all of these initiatives as they go into place, whether it be next year or two years from now. I think they're coming, and we need to be prepared for that. And I think, as Herman just mentioned, that's what this is all about as far as Race to the Top.
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback real quick on that, you know, I had a section of classes includes Mr. Miller's daughter Cassidy that did the performance-based assessment part on online pilot about a month and a half or two ago that they did. And we asked that group to do that and pilot it, and that gave our tech coordinators some valuable input and insight as to what kind of challenges and successes we were having with our infrastructure technology-wise. That was pretty important to do, to have a realistic idea of what you can support and, you know, when you talk about a group of 25 students versus a grade level of 100 students all simultaneously logged on, you know, what setup works? Can you do it wireless, or does it need to be in a hardwired lab? All these are things that I know that he's considered as he's, you know, working this out. And we're gonna ask one more of my eighth-grade sections, the second trial pilot on this is the EOI end-of-year exam. And I actually was at the Common Core meeting yesterday morning at the ESC, and I'd worked the non-catheter part of it, I didn't get to finish the other one. I did the 19 questions, it's not that long, it's about 19 questions, I did that and experienced it the way they would, as far as the manipulatives you can pull up. There's, for the catheter portion, there's a pop-up catheter comes on the screen. There's technology things that I think adults are worried about, but all of you that have kids or grandkids, you see that they're not intimidated by that stuff at all, because the thing that they lack is the fear of breaking it, you know what I mean? Adults are worried about they're gonna screw something up, it's gonna explode on them. Kids just do it, you know what I mean, because they're not worried about breaking it, they know it's an electronic instrument and it can be reset. But adults don't operate under the same principle because they don't want paying for it. So in short, I think you'll find that students often aren't intimidated by the manipulation of a ruler, a protractor, or an item on there, or going and getting a tool and bringing it down, dragging and dropping. They are not nearly as intimidated as the people who are trying to deliver the instruction are. And I'm just saying that as a teacher, because you worry about it in hampering performance. It comes naturally with our mindset. But giving them the experience can only benefit them. Online testing is probably in their future moving ahead through high school to college at some point, so we can't do anything but think we're benefiting our students by giving them the experience. Anything else I could answer for you?
Mr. Miller, appreciate that. As far as coming back to the board, I don't think anybody would have an objection. I think it's imperative, at least for another year, because we're moving forward with Race to the Top, and I, all of these initiatives are gonna continue to play. The High School to Higher Ed Alignment Program has already decided their meeting over the summer, even though there's no stipend involved, they're just wanting to meet, to finish the work and to continue the work that they've already started. FAMs has a lot of things in place, I'd like to see how they're gonna play out as they implement them in the future. We've talked about FIP, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to see that come back, and are building improvement teams next year. You've already heard from STEM and seen some of the things that's happened there, so all of these initiatives are still important to us, and as we move forward, I think that we need to continue to monitor our progress. This just gives you an opportunity on a monthly basis to see what's happening with all of these initiatives as we go forward.
Yeah, like I said, those video presentations might be good for us to pick a light night where you don't have a lot of agenda items, and it would be like a 20, 25-minute thing you could check out of your teachers and some video clips of students and things that are happening in classrooms. Those would be good things for you to see, but we just pick it wisely, it doesn't have to be anytime soon, it could just be worked in where it fit best.
Okay. Appreciate your efforts here in reporting.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Vonnell.
I'm meeting last Wednesday morning, and one of the items on the agenda was an update on the boilers, number two boiler is still out for repairs. And the, the party that's doing the repairs had requested that we cost-share in the repair, and so we discussed that, and it's one of those things that, right now, we're gonna just kind of take a wait and see, and see if that issue comes up again and deal with it. As we discussed, it's a very complicated matter, and there is merit to cost-sharing if it would avoid any type of litigation and so forth, which, as we all know, would get very expensive very quickly, so we just kind of take a wait-and-see approach there. The filter system that was loaned to us seems to be working quite well. Jay says that every time he checks the filter, there's less deposits in the filter, so that's good to hear, and plus, hopefully, maybe that will end up possibly being the saving grace on boiler number three perhaps, and also in the future down the road greatly extend the life of the number one, number two boiler when it gets back in service. Also discussed out in the bus garage, an undercarriage washing unit, about $5,000 installed. That particular item, I'll just pass the little catalog cut around there. Seems like a good way to kind of help maintain buses by getting rid of the solder spray on the undercarriage. So I think, you know, basically our recommendation is to proceed with the purchase of that. And new bus, we, you know, have one right now that's, has it been delivered yet?
Delivered today.
Okay. But now we're looking at, you know, another, a second new bus. So basically, the, be the state-term pricing, so essentially the cost of the new bus, the second new bus, if you will, would be the same, pretty much the same as what we're dealing with right now. So there, again, you know, we gotta keep looking at updating the bus fleet. And can't afford to, you know, have let that go by the way, so I'm gonna have to deal with keeping our bus fleet updated. Also talked about a thermal scan of the flat roof, and a couple areas where the flat roof is, you know, periodically we have some leaks, and for $1,350, excuse me, a company will come in, do a thermal scan, and they'll identify any moisture areas. So it would kind of help with an assessment of, you know, doing some repairs and that sort of thing. There's a possibility that at some point in the future, we may want to look at a more long-term situation on that flat roof. I don't, maybe I'm part of it, but I don't think we're gonna be able to put a pitch roof on all of it just because of all the various roof lines around it, because if you end up with a couple valleys, you know, a valley, you kind of just end up with a different problem. But there are some, some possibilities we discussed for some options to maybe improve the situation a little bit for a more long-term situation. Then we also talked about sidewalk grinding. There's some areas, I think we mentioned before that, you know, over the winter with the deep freeze we had, there's some frost heave, and so some of those areas were tripping hazards, while Jay has a company that had done some grinding in the past, and just gonna have them come in and do some grinding. I mean, from an aesthetics point, yeah, it's gonna change the physical appearance of those areas they ground, because you're gonna expose the aggregate, you know, so you're gonna, but, you know, it's, it's better to take care of the tripping hazard, and if it doesn't quite match, you know, some of the rest, so be it, at least you get rid of the tripping hazard.
No way it's gonna lay back down?
No, it's doubtful. You know, usually when stuff like that heaves up, it's pretty unlikely it's gonna go back down. Because you had, you know, more force pushing up than you're ever gonna have pushing back down, so it's, as far as the forces from the, you know, frost heave, they're pretty significant at times.
How thick is the sidewalk?
I'm assuming that four inch.
Yeah, and we're only taking off just a small portion of it. We did some at the elementary in the past, and aesthetically, really, you can't notice the difference.
Nice and low.
It just kind of winds, yeah. But it reduces that tripping hazard that you have. This area, gotta get my bearings right out here, we've got a few of the sidewalks that are uneven, and when people start coming in, occasionally you'll get people tripping there, plus the walk along the, coming into the gym, there are some areas there too, so.
And the, basically, the final item on our agenda, a day or two before our meeting with new fire marshal, and the fire marshal came in, you know, the previous fire marshal obviously retired. So my point is that it's not like we've been without state inspection from the fire marshals, it's just we've got a different inspector now, and the new inspector looks at things, I guess, that the other inspector maybe, I won't say overlooked, but didn't see an issue with. So the fact of the matter is, some, if not all of these items have been unchanged for a long, long time, so it's not like our staff and students are in imminent danger of some catastrophic event, it's just we've got a difference of opinion now. I'm not downplaying any of the citations, I mean, if you go strictly by the letter of the law, then okay, we're, you know, but the fact is, in one situation in particular, that is classroom doors, there's a conflict between what has become accepted security practice in the event of school situations that have gone on over the last several years in various communities, and that's in conflict with state building codes with regard to fire aspects. So therefore, on the day of our meeting, all the doorstops were coming off the classroom doors. So at some point, we have to make some decisions. There's a, there's a way to get back to the situation where we're following our safety plan, but it's gonna cost us money to do it. So gonna have to mechanize withhold-open closers and tie into the fire alarms, and that's gonna be pricey, so it'll come down to kind of deciding which doors have a priority in that and stuff. We hadn't really gotten into any in-depth conversation in that aspect, but it's something, you know, of course, we're coming up on summer, so we, something we're gonna have to maybe just talk about before we get into the next school year.
Is that the state code?
Yeah, but if you, you know, I didn't look at the drawings from when the building renovations were done, but if the classroom wall, which I'm 99% sure it is, the corridor wall, if it's classified as a firewall, then the doors are, you know, classified as fire doors. Theoretically, they're supposed to be shut unless you have a hold-open device that's tied into the fire alarm system, therefore, a smoke detector goes off, it releases the door closer, shuts the door, and maintains integrity of the firewall. But like I say, that was in conflict with our safety plan that we developed with the sheriff's office, and that other people in the school safety business, I don't, if you will, have been recommending what you do these days, because like when, and John's office was another example where he had to take the closer off, or the hold-open, foothold-open off his door. So we're sitting in his office talking, and because of the fact that, you know, the door is good at not transmitting sound, that somebody could have been doing something significant in the outer office there around Cindy's desk, and we would have been totally oblivious to it. So that's the logic of, you know, the classroom situation, something could be going on in the building, and a teacher in the classroom will be totally oblivious to it because she wouldn't, or he or she would not be aware it was even going on, but with the door open, you hear something going on, you got some time to make some decisions and react, you know, in the best interest of the students.
And I think in the case in my office, Charlie's office, you know, we don't open into a corridor, it opens into an office, it's not a, it is a fire door, but I think when they purchased the doors when they built the original building, they just purchased all the doors away, and it has a closer on it, and because it has a closer on it, it can't be propped open, because it's a fire door with a closer. The only way we can prop it open is if we get an architect to give us a statement that says it's okay to remove the closer. But we can't just remove the closer and leave the door open, we have to have it closed. So it's just a different interpretation of the fire laws from this inspector as compared to others. And most of, I think there was 19 different citations on the report, and I would say probably at this point, at least 17, if not more, have already been addressed and corrected.
As I understand it, I don't know that we have a date, but the fire marshal's coming back in.
In two weeks.
And if anyone wanna look at it or if, there's the report. That's pretty much all I have.
Anything to the asphalt?
Oh, well, as far as the summer projects for the asphalt, I'm actually, last Wednesday, John, I was gonna take a walk, and then it started pouring down rain, and we just got our schedules together since then to kind of determine a scope of work for asphalt repairs over the summer, so we'll try to get that scheduled here as far as John and I determining the scope here in the next few days.
The tarp on the asphalt, Joe, is that, is that ours, is that parent who bought that?
You know what? I don't know that. Pardon?
Is it cut through the field, or is it just a really big tarp?
I have no clue.
It is a very big tarp.
Well, I mean, my concern is that if you ever lay a plastic bag on grass in a day like today, that's dead grass, you're gonna have a square infield by tomorrow, you know, and I mean, I saw him putting on, I was watching from the track meet last night, I saw him putting on it, and I couldn't tell. night, I saw them putting on it and I couldn't tell whether it's an arched tarp or whether they pulled it back off the grass or not because, you know, with these hot days, they're going to kill it.
Do you know, I mean, they ordered it from that line.
I should, I walked right by it when they were doing it. I don't recall it being out on the grass, but...
Clarence checked it this morning, so I'm sure if it was, he'd have probably pulled it back, but I can't tell you.
I didn't go out across the street tonight, did I?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did that's correct, a booster is...
Yeah, you'll see probably donation, we're waiting for the final billing and we'll just fill the boosters and they'll donate back the money for that. So the boosters are paying for that. Softball.
Does it have a chain on the end? Does it have chains on the end of the end? I mean, it was a huge tarp that someone pulled out.
Yeah, I was just looking at the mass, size of it rather than, than I had a little one running around that I had to keep my eye on too.
Any other, any other questions, sir? Has any, everybody had an opportunity to go out there and look at the dugouts at the softball field then? Nice, nice addition.
They did fill those holes in there, the access, which is nice. Coming in, coming in, I know it's going to be a lot better.
What's that?
The repair of some potholes on the access drive.
That's what we're going to look at.
Uh, you did, somebody did something there.
Yeah.
Much appreciated, easier on the car.
With, with referring back to the dugouts, I don't know, they put new, they put new fence in front of the dugouts, did they not?
Yes, yes.
I don't know that it, it's actually high enough, it leaves a gap, if a girl, some of these girls can hit a ball pretty hard and you get a line drive, it's going to go straight for the dugout, there's no protection there. It's about two foot or so shy.
It's four foot fence, isn't it?
Yeah, that was what we had specified, we'll have to look at it and see if...
You, you specified eight foot?
No, four foot in front of the dugouts.
Yeah, it was just a concern that I heard, you know, that I see it happening, hope it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
It would be nice to put a forty-five on the back, we talked about that.
We had talked about that and at this point, we just didn't have the funds to do it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, yeah, just extend the poles up just on the back.
Okay, Mr. Ronal, thank you. Athletic council, no report. Personnel, Mr. Ronal.
No report.
Finance audit, Dr. Miller.
No report.
Policy, Dr. Miller.
No report.
Communications, Mr. Waikar.
No report, however, we want to have one.
We'd like to try to get one scheduled, if not next week, which is looking pretty dim right now with baccalaureate and senior awards and superintendent's advisory, so I'm not thinking it's going to happen next week, so it'll probably have to be the week after, which is after school's out.
No report.
Insurance, Mr. Ronal.
Tomorrow night at six.
Administrative reports, elementary, Mrs. Dangerfield.
Mrs. Dangerfield's at the elementary program.
Oh, that's right.
And Mr. Richardson is, was with Herman coming back from Columbus, they went in two cars, I'm not sure whether he's back yet or not, and if he is, he may be going home to get supper.
I did look at Mrs. Dangerfield, I think her calendar is long, I think it lists the in-service, the thirtieth, the last day is the twenty minute.
We have two. We have an in-service day on the thirtieth and then we have teacher checkout day on the second.
Okay, Mrs. Dixon, high school.
Sometimes there's so much going on, you just don't know what to write. So if you look at that board report, the agenda's very important, it has a lot of the events for next week. We're starting off with the mini relay tomorrow in this thunderstorm, but we've got Plan B, that's what school's all about, Plan B, so we're going to roll with Plan B, so we're going to have an indoor mini relay, because I imagine it's supposed to rain most of the day. Sunday will be our first annual cruise for a cure. Sammy Waikar has worked very hard along with some of his classmates to bring that to fruition and I think it is going to happen under Sonny Starks, it's going to happen no matter what, but, you know, he's done a really good job for that and that will all be raising money for the American Cancer Society. There are senior events, if you have any questions on those, make sure you let me know. The last day for seniors will be Friday, day after tomorrow, take itself a little bit by surprise that it's happened so quickly. I think our spring was so cool that nobody quite realized that the end of school was this close. Mr. Miller and his staff have been collecting the computers and they're having a hard time and some of the seniors are finishing up on projects and just aren't ready to give it up yet. I did find out about one of our seniors today, I, I got an email from one of the teachers at the career center and Alex Holzinger, who's on your strategic plan, I don't think you know this either, because I didn't know it either, he's a full day career center student, he took first in the state in principals of technology competition at Skills USA, so he's going to be going to nationals, so that is, that's a huge undertaking, that's a big thing, so we're really proud of Alex.
I think Alex worked with Mr. Tucker for a while on some of the, he was on your committee during strategic plan.
So I, I only see him when he's, well, you know, if you have a teenager anyway, it's kind of hard to get information out of them and it doesn't matter if you're a parent or a principal. So I do see him leaving in the car, so I'm going to have to stop him, kind of congratulate him and know that we're really proud of it because that is, that is a major undertaking. Did you have any questions on that?
Thank you very much. Mr. Hill's on.
Mr. Hill was at the baseball game with Mr. Cusick, there's just too many things going on tonight. Mr. Radman was fixing a sewer line break, or a sewer plug rather, so he's, if he's here, he ought to go home and shower. I am not sure if he's still here.
Well, if he's home, he's a guard, I don't think I'm going to be...
No, no, you didn't want him here.
When you, when you see him, when you see him, tell him he said thanks. Mrs. Petticord.
Not much, just winding down is what we're doing. Sophie and the kids, seniors will be getting all of their money out of their accounts. We did some of that today, we'll be doing that again tomorrow, so whatever they have left in their accounts, it will be given and they'll sign it showing that we reimbursed them back, you know, what they had left in their accounts. That'll be going on tomorrow because they pretty much said they're not here Friday. I think they're doing a barbecue or something out, out in the parking lot, so anyhow, getting back, I, I thought I'd give you a total of our grandparents, there's been, there was a total of five hundred and thirty-three grandparents this year. It went back, back up from last year, so I was excited about that. There was a lot more grandmom, grandpa special friends in, in this year, so that went up. We did the testing and feeding of all of the elementary and middle school. We did middle school different, instead of going to classrooms, which we've done in the past. This year we took them, Mr. Richardson said, let's, let's take them from the gym after the regular students get done, let's take them from the gym, split the cafeteria and we'll put a grade in the middle and a grade in the high school. It worked wonderful and I thank you, Linda, for letting us do that and use the cafeteria working with us for that. Because we got them through fast, they were backed down, ready, fed and ready to go for their, for their testing. I think is, I think they need to start on a full belly, I think that helps and, and they proved that it has. I put in my last boarding order, next week, we're done, we're done with coke, everything's winding down. My commodities, they did a little bit, something different this year. I had a little bit of money left over, I never leave money. But what happened was, they gave me a little bit of extra money in February, so they didn't give me enough time to order in, so I have like a thousand dollars left of my commodity entitlement. They allowed me this year, this is new for the state, to allocate that to like, we use a lot of ketchup, we use a lot of meat, so they allowed me to take that money and say, okay, we'll let you spend that and allocate that to like Tyson, to the different companies. So I did that for the first time this year. So I used up all of my money because I always use it, I usually go over, you know, and they have to tell me, you, you know, spend some of it because it's important, that's money we need to use and it, and it helps food programs. So I don't know if that's something they're going to start from here a lot because the general rule is, if you don't use it, you lose it. So I always use mine, but because they give me that little bit of money, so then he wrote to me, I know both of the gentlemen down there at the state, they said, Darnin, would you be interested in? I said, absolutely, so I did, so that's what I did. So this will be the first time this year for that, but I'm excited because it allowed me to use up, use up what I had, which was a thousand, a thousand, a thousand, you know, so I, I put it towards meat and the ketchup, there were just a few companies they allowed me to choose from, but it was...
Well, they're going to give you credit, is that it? Tyson and different, these different places.
So many pounds of that meat I allocated to go of my money, so they charge it per pound, so you figure out how much you want to send to each one and then it just takes it off of your entitlement dollars until you spend it. So I spent it, so I used it, I felt like I used a fine one. The only other thing, I'm sure you're hearing talking, I don't know if you've heard it in, in the meetings, is, you know, the new target on the sodium, and SNA, which is the School Nutrition Association, and I just want to put this bike in your ear, if you get a chance, go out on the website, they're asking people to help support them, they're not asking that we stop what we're doing because they feel that the nutrition is important, but what they're asking is the congressman to look at, this is going to be not only less of the provision, not going to modify, but also costly on the school system and then you're cleaning in the program. So there's a great resource out there that explains all the areas that they're going to touch on and they're asking the congressman to ask the USDA to, let's not be so hard this year, let's let them have the target of the sodium one, let's give them time, you know, to, the vendors and everybody get caught up and not be so strict on it. So whether or not that, that passes right now, they're asking everybody to write to their congressman and give them their opinion on it. So that's what I'm asking you to do, if you would go out on the SNA, and I didn't even get to talk to John on that, but it's, it's, it's a good website, just to look at, but I personally, as a nutrition, you know, they ask you, and I belong to the SNA, and it's a very, I could sit here and read it to you, but I just got it today, the email, I just got it when I looked at my email here and I thought, you know, I might naturally do it to you. But they, they have target, they want to, they want, the SNA wants to maintain the target one sodium limits and suspend the implications of further sodium reduction until scientific research supports, supports it. And what, it's, it's a nice article and if you'd like, I, I can email it to all you guys and attach it and let you look at it. And if you feel like you support it, then maybe write the congressman, because that's what they're asking right now, because it's, you know, they're wanting to see if they would just give us a little bit more time to get ready for that, because it's going to be costly. So other than that, that's what they're working on for next year and I don't have...
One of the legislative items I didn't go over because it was kind of a morus, but at any rate, the USDA has said it'll make seventy-eight dollars, seventy-eight million dollars available for investment in local and regional food systems, including food hubs, farmers markets, aggregation and processing facilities, distribution services and other local food businesses, so maybe, maybe that will filter down to maybe some local businesses around here, you know, I'm thinking in terms like bakers and I know we can't use that because of certain standards, but...
Well, John and I did talk a little bit and I'm going to, I'm looking at the farm scores as an example, but I'm, I'm going to approach some of the local farmers like the Paul, that's Van Taut, probably Dan Simmons, and put forth a letter saying, would you be interested in, you know, joining forces that I can buy off of you and be local and yet it's fresh, so...
Well, it sounds like they're, they're keying on local stuff, local vendors.
They are, and I think the whole idea of going with local farm markets, you're, you're right about bakers, we'd love to, but they don't meet the qualifications on milk.
Right.
But, you know, as far as the local farm markets, for fresh fruit and vegetables, it would be great to be able to buy locally and keep it right here in, in our school district.
And I, I have one that's good, and now that has opened up, but I want to approach, now some of them may not be able to keep up with this, it may not, that I need, because that's why when things slow down, because it's been kind of crazy, there is a letter that I can use as an example to send to these guys to see if they'd be interested, so that's the starting point, so that is the process. Any other questions?
I read that, right, on May sixteen is the last day of those charges for the district?
Yes, all the charges have to be paid up for the kids because they're taxed, you know, they can't be spoling anything, they can't be in the name of the ballot, so we allow them. It takes us about two weeks to get all those charges in. At the district, that's just something we've always done and asked...
What do you do with the remaining two weeks that's coming?
Well, most of them will have money in their accounts, that'll carry them to that two, so that's, that's what we ask.
To the red after the month?
Yeah, they can't go into the bank. And then if they do, they don't, their report cards are held, it's usually, until that's paid up. It's, it's a really great system and it's worked for us, Charlene can tell you, there's not hardly any outstanding, my cashiers do an excellent job and we try to do that as well as, and it's worked.
I got a question.
I hope I can answer.
They pay for it on the web, what is the ID number? Because it's not your account number.
No, it's, it's their student, like you hit on their, correct me, right, it's on the same number as their, given on parent assist or their student ID number on the report card, it's usually...
It's actually a state assigned ID.
It's not, it's not their parent assist number, it's their state assigned ID number.
It should be on their report card or call the building secretary.
Yeah.
What, it's a parent assist, that number that's supposed to give you information, that's their student ID.
Okay, I thought you did that.
Because the Millers generally do things at the eleventh hour, so you know, when we find out at seven eighteen, you know, that nobody has money in their account and you know, I'm gone for the day and have the checkbook and, you know, trying to add it and it's like, well, you're out of luck.
The only secretaries and then if they could have owned it, I'd be glad to look at it.
I need, just need one long day and then tie it off.
Yeah, it's nice, I can get it set up. Any other questions?
Great, you texted that, I know somebody.
That isn't often, isn't it?
It worked today.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mrs. Dangerfield, would you, would you like to give your report?
Um, I have to hold it up here.
That's fine.
But I can just informally tell you that the big thing we did in the last month is the third grade and the fourth grade took the achievement test and were done with our makeups and we sent those into the state and we're keeping our fingers crossed that they all come back and pass on the test. Especially our third graders are really looking forward to their results because anyone who didn't pass that third grade reading section is going to give, be given that opportunity to take the test again. Thanks, Mrs. Petticord. And we're looking forward to June tenth, that's our kindergarten screening and registration day officially, we have eighty-four people pre-registered already, new kindergarteners and that's a real healthy number. I counted a few days ago, twenty-nine of those are open enrollment applications, so I thought that was an interesting piece of information. Our students are getting excited about summer vacation coming, I think our teachers are too. Our fourth graders are really looking forward to becoming fifth graders and we're getting ready for that transition. Our fourth graders are going to go next week and visit the middle school and see what that's like. That's pretty much all I had, if you had any questions.
The kindergarten, the career day.
That was so nice, yes, that was a few days, a few weeks ago now, was it two or just one? Boy, we had a lot of community members come in, our kindergarten teachers planned it, it was really a hands-on learning... it. It was really a hands-on learning activity about different careers that are out there. And a lot of community members came in and did lots of things. Mr. Garwood was one of them. He shared agriculture. And Dr. Miller was another. He was letting kids hear their heartbeats, showing them how stethoscopes worked. It was a nice thing. I think they're going to do it again in the future.
That was two hours, 110 students. And I think that was the first time that I went two hours without breathing.
Yeah, they were so excited about it. They enjoyed it.
It was, they were very well behaved. You know, hats off to the teachers there. I went home and told Linda, I says, you know, I don't know if I could handle that.
The best part of kindergarten Career Day, though, was that you inspired a young man to ride a bus.
This one, yeah, we all name names, but there's a kindergartner, Alex May. He's been getting a ride home with his mother all year long, every day. And he got so into what he got in his goodie bag and what he got from Career Day. He was talking to his friends about it. He walked right up to the bus line and walked right onto the bus. And one of the bus drivers saw him and said, I don't think I recognize this one. So, and his mother was patiently waiting for him.
Just on the road.
Yeah, they were, they were really into it. It was exciting.
Well, it was, it was very well organized. And, you know, coming from, you know, the Career Center and what I want to teach, it was, it was certainly nice to come in there and show those students a little bit about what we do.
Mrs. Campbell really directed the presenters, as far as, you know, having them put it on the level of a five-year-old, and, and, you know, ask them to bring hands-on things. There was a contractor, they were hammering nails into pieces of wood and things like that. Really good and geared toward the kids.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, though. Track and Field Day was, was really cool.
The weather cooperated.
It was beautiful. And everybody was, was nice.
Yes. Thank you. And yesterday, we had the art show. Lots of people attended that, too. Things have been running smoothly. Now, we're just waiting on those test results.
And how, how did this evening go?
Wonderful. The third graders did a great job in their musical show. Does anybody have a third grader? No.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Miller.
As you hear, is, you know, every time, this time of year, when the building presents, I mean, everything they talk about is involving technology. I was fortunate enough, just Monday and Tuesday here, I went up to Sandusky and went to a Google seminar. And when we're talking about, you know, peer review, peer, you know, with our teachers being able to be across the board to see a paper that's written, you know, this is going to be a lot more easy, a lot easier now with the Google, what they call GAF, Google Apps for Education. Because now it allows a student to write a paper. Every teacher can see it, mark it, revisions, and the revision history stays with it from day one. So you can see it just, everything we're heading towards is what we're already had put in place. It's really reassuring when we, I hear my staff talking, and, you know, they're saying stuff that they're doing that, you know, it's going to fit right, right in place, but we're laying in line also in technology. So it's, it's always reassuring when you come back from something like that and hear things that are falling into place. And then we also have to remind ourselves, this is only year two of our one-to-one, and how far we've already adopted it. When we're going around and trying to get, get these computers, you know, last year, students were like, you know, almost, here, you're going to take this back. And this year, we have students, man, thanks, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what I'd do without this. You know, we're getting much more complimentary remarks as we're grabbing them back from students this year. Last year was a little more, you know, it was something different, new, you know, a little more, so it's linked also to see how our students are adopting to our, you know, our rollouts of stuff. You know, this time of year, just, it's, I'm trying to be in 20 places at once. You know, we have, the Performing Arts Center is just jam solid since March, it seems like, that way. This third grade musical, that was, that's quite the production she put on. And it's always fun to set up and watch these kids, you know, work around our wires and everything else. And that Performing Arts Center, we were booked out there with the old school, I think they presented today. And then also in here, we had the high school choir show to our eighth graders. So, you know, they tried to book out there, but they were forced back into here. It's just, there's something going on in every nook and corner of the building this time of year. And we're trying to slowly get things wound down so we can start gearing up for next year.
Major project for the summer?
Oh, yeah. One, getting all, you know, the one-to-one back in, get it revamped for next year. We're also adding 90 computers down at the elementary. So basically, three carts are 30. And then we also, you know, got the new netbook carts in the middle school. You know, we had to basically touch, we did a computer count today. We're at about 1,100 devices that we're going to have to touch this summer to, you know, revamp, reghost, reimagine, and make sure all the security updates are in place. And we have to make sure that we have all XP machines out of the district this summer, because that's officially on the, off of Microsoft's support list. And what happens now is if you get a, you know, you're just, you don't have the security in place. So we have to make sure that we have every machine at least running Windows 7 or better. So, yeah, lots to do, as usual. Never a lack. Any other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Then I'll be presenting next month with some of the other stuff that we're holding back.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
Well, just as Daryl finished telling you, next month, we'll be hearing a presentation from technology. So we'll be starting at 6:30 again next month, and we'll have a presentation from Daryl and his team. Wanted to share with you that Linda Dixon and I attended an advanced ed preparation meeting in Columbus recently. Next year, we're due for reaccreditation. So we'll be having an onsite review. Advanced Ed, I think, is, it continues to be a very good process for us. It looks at our strategic plan, our building improvement teams, and it brings it all together. And Linda recently had the opportunity to do a onsite review for a school in Michigan near Detroit. So she had firsthand experience of being a part of an onsite review team. So I think that will help us as we prepare for our own review. And speaking of Linda, I also wanted to congratulate her. I think I sent out the information that US News and World Report has identified Crestview as a bronze award. That's based on college readiness. That's Crestview High School. It's based on the number of students who are enrolled and participating in AP courses and dual credit and in early college entrance, and how successful they are. And, you know, we've come a long way in a short time. When Dan Simmons was on the board and his daughter was a senior, she was the only student that we had that took an AP test. So in that short period of time, do you want to tell me again the number of students that are enrolled in AP courses and, just AP courses? Let's just stay with that.
Enrolled and taking the test vote?
Right now, we have, this year, we probably have 60 to 70 students that are enrolled. That number will be very similar to that next year.
And how many are taken, have taken the test yet?
We have one tomorrow. We had two tests last week. So overall, we will have about 50 tests taken. There, and the fee is $83 per student. So, you know, the families are seeing the value in that. If a student scores three or higher on an AP exam, that is guaranteed credit, four and five are guaranteed credit at any national, nationwide at any college and university.
So we're pretty excited about, first of all, the recognition. Secondly, I think that it shows, number one, the dedication of our staff as we move forward. And I think Race to the Top is another part of that. You know, we've, we've built around Race to the Top with the high school to higher ed alignment and AP courses, trying to encourage students to invest in their future by taking more challenging curriculum as they move forward. And I think our student board member is one example of that. So congratulations to Preston as he prepares. Now, he tells you that he's anxious to get out, but, you know, I think Preston is going to miss our board and being a part of this organization.
I think that's all I have, Mr. Garwood. I think most of the other things we've already talked about. So let me move right in. Move right in, please. Item number one, I'd like to request the board accept the resignation of Ron Milliron, transportation supervisor mechanic, effective at the end of the 2013-14 contract year. That would be June 30th, 2014. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Charlene.
Miller?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Item number two, I'd like to request the board approve the purchase of one new school bus from Canton Truck Sales at the price established, established by the Omarisa Bus Bid Purchasing Program.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There is no change in pricing. That's the same, they extended the pricing to, I think maybe Ken alluded to it in his report, but it's the same price that we already paid for the bus that was delivered today.
That's correct. And that's just as Mr. Bonnagle reported in his report. Very good. Any further discussion? We shall proceed to vote. Charlene.
Tucker?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Item number three, I'd like to request the board adopt the following resolution regarding the retirement resignation of Marge Gaskell, CHS-CMS cook, effective May 31st, 2014. And I'm not going to read the resolution, but what it does is it establishes that the board would consider Marge for retirement rehire. And we will have the public hearing on July 14th, 2014 in the Performing Arts Center. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene.
Miller?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Item number four, I'd like to request the board adopt the resolution proclaiming the week of May 5th through the 9th, 2014 as Teacher Appreciation Week.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, please.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Item number five, I'd like to request the board adopt the resolution proclaiming the week of May 5th through 9th as School Nutrition Employee Week. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think in regards to both of these, we, you know, we've talked often about how great our staff is and how, as you've heard Herman say tonight, we've got a good rapport with both groups. And I think we strive to keep that. So it's nice to be able to congratulate them and thank them for an excellent job each year for all that they do for our students.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Item number six, I'd like to request the board approve the members of the class of 2014 to be granted their high school diplomas on May 25th, 2014, provided they have satisfactorily completed their courses of study as prescribed by the State of Ohio and the Crestview Local Board of Education. And you can read the list there. I think that you might recognize Preston's name. I think there's a Samuel Wyker that might be a relative. So it's very nice to be able to bring this group of students to you. It's been a good group.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes. Mr. Garwood, if you'll strengthen your hand. I think that you'll need it for shaking hands, since they go across the stage next Sunday.
Actually, I think.
Mr. Wyker, do you want to present to Samuel?
Sure.
And maybe Mr. Bonnagle to Ms. McPenny?
Very good. And Mrs. Dixon, congratulations for what Mr. Dilling has just spoke to us about as far as the bronze. I mean, you had the bronze, you and your staff, the bronze this year, and the students, what about next year?
For our graduates?
For the, for the bronze, or?
Oh, oh, gosh, yeah. We're going to be silver. Silver. That's what we're after.
Okay. That being said, the board need a motion, the board to move to executive session for the purpose of interviewing student candidates for student representation on the Board of Education.
And I would like to request that we include Preston in that, that interview, if we could.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we shall proceed to vote. Charlene, please.
Tucker?
Yes.
Wyker?
Yes.
Bonnagle?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
And there will be no further action. And there will be no further action.